Good afternoon, and thank you for joining the University of Windsor's very first virtual town hall. My name is Joanne Belouet, and I will be moderating today's event. Today's presentation will include an important update from the university's president and vice chancellor, Dr. Robert Gordon, followed by a live Q and A. At that time, he will be joined by Douglas Neal, Provost and Vice President Academic, Rita La Chavita, Vice President of Human Resources, Michael Su, Vice President of Research and Innovation, Anna Kirby, Acting Vice President of Planning and Administration, Sheri Lynn Minard, Environmental Health and Safety Manager, Chris Bush, Associate Vice President of Enrollment Management, Nick Baker, Director of Open Learning, and Ryan Flanagan, Associate Vice President Student Experience. Note that the live Q and A feature will be turned off during the formal presentation. Now, I'd like to introduce Dr. Robert Gordon.
Well, thank you very much, Joanne, and hi, everyone. I hope that you and your families are doing well. I know this is something that we said many times before over the past few months, but the well-being of our community continues to be the number one priority during these uncertain times. Welcome to today's virtual town hall. Our focus over the next hour is going to be on what we are doing to move our university forward as we deal with all of the complex issues associated with COVID-19. But before we begin, I would like to start by recognizing the anti-black racism that shocked and disturbed the world. The reprehensible killing of George Floyd at the hands of four police officers has given rise to protests and condemnation in the United States, Canada, and many nations throughout the world. That is, of course, because it's not an isolated incident. We stand in solidarity with the Black community. Many of you are left reeling from feelings of profound sadness, anger, and grief. As a collective leadership, we need to do more. As a university community, we need to be more. It is therefore incumbent upon each of us, in whatever context we are, to advance efforts against anti-black racism and discrimination in all forms. Last week, the University of Windsor's statement on the death of Mr. Floyd did not go far enough and failed to fully recognize the significance of the moment and explicitly condemn anti-black racism. The university thanks all of those who brought this to our attention, including a large number of our students and student groups across the university. We apologize. As many of you have also been asking, the university is finalizing a public statement for tomorrow to highlight an initial first step in how we will attempt to do more, so thank you. Well, it's hard to believe, but it's been more than three months since we began dealing head-on with the pandemic. And our campus community has done an incredible job in facing the challenges posed by COVID-19. You have all shown both incredible resilience and dedication to ensure that we create the best possible learning environment for our community. Just think, over a few days in mid-March, we were able to put a plan in place to ensure that all of our students, including this year's 3,800 spring graduates, were able to complete their courses in alternative mode of delivery for the remainder of the winter semester. Among those who worked so hard to make this possible were our essential staff who have been on campus since the start of our COVID-19 response, ensuring that our infrastructure remains intact and ready for our return to campus, our staff, most of whom have been working remotely from home to provide the day-to-day support we simply can't do without, our instructors and faculty, who ensured programs could be completed to finish the winter semester and are being effectively delivered this summer and for the fall, our alumni, who launched the fundraising effort to help students impacted by COVID-19, and of course, our students, who have both been adaptable and patient during these extremely difficult times. It's heartening to know we have people to count on, and my heartfelt thanks go to each and every one of you. Over the past three months, we've also seen our campus community working in many different ways to better serve our community. Many of our grads have been on the front lines in hospitals on both sides of the border. We're also tremendously proud of our students who have been contributing to the fight against COVID-19 in the work they're doing. And every decision we've made over the past three months to deal with COVID-19 has put the safety and well-being of our staff, students, and faculty front and center, and that won't change. With that in mind, let's start the conversation about where we go from here. We are charting a new course, and it might need to be changed and adapted because we still don't know how long COVID-19 will be with us. But together, we are going to succeed. Here are some of the things we're going to be doing as we move forward. We are ready to welcome new students. We made the announcement last month that we were moving primarily to online delivery for the fall semester. Our incoming class, however, is busy planning their programs and choosing their courses for the fall. We're expecting enrollments, both domestically and internationally, to be in line with our broader targets that we established subsequent to the pandemic. But this still will require a strong and coordinated effort across institution over the next few months. We also want to promote an exciting event planned for June the 27th, and that's called U-Windsor Live: Future Student Edition. So we're really excited about that happening in a few weeks. Please also remember that AskUWindsor.ca continues to develop and share answers to key questions about online learning and our plans for the fall semester. Also, many virtual events and activities are being planned to keep alive the tradition of Welcome Week. So you will all be hearing more about this in the coming weeks ahead, so we're really excited. We're also ready for classes. As we have already mentioned, the transition to primarily online courses is underway for the fall. Instructors across the university are exploring a range of different delivery approaches for the fall. We have significantly increased the resources in supporting our teaching, sorry, our learning management system, as well as a blackboard, which will be further elaborated on today in the virtual town hall. Our goal is to fully ensure coherent and responsive support for our instructors and students across the university, as well as supporting what we hope will be robust and reliable infrastructure for teaching and learning across the university as well this fall. Another important consideration for our university is the research that we do. Related to research, earlier this month, the Research Planning Working Group released a framework to support the important research activities on campus, some of which is directly related to COVID-19. Due to the government guidelines and current restrictions, research is limited to only critical research at this time to ensure the health and safety of our faculty, staff, and students. At present, we have approximately nine critical research initiatives that have been given the go-ahead, and we expect more in the future. It is important to understand, however, that much of our research, scholarship, and creative work continues to be done virtually and remotely as we live through COVID-19. In terms of planning the safe return to campus, a total of 10 return-to-campus working groups with representation from students, staff, and faculty have been put into place as we begin to anticipate the resumption of on-campus activities in both the short term and the long term. Our pandemic planning committee continues to be active and will provide oversight of the plans of all working groups, as will the deans across the university and senior leadership. We've adopted a phased-in approach for the return to campus that again will be in line with public health guidelines and as restrictions are lifted by the government of Ontario and our federal government of Canada. As you know, our campus is currently operating on an essential services model, which means that a limited number of areas have been working on campus with more than 95% of our faculty and staff working remotely. There remains a great deal of uncertainty of when things will move forward, but we will do our best to communicate to our community. We cannot provide a definitive timeline when we will all be back together again, but rest assured, protocols and procedures are and will be put into place to allow for a safe return to working, teaching, and learning on campus. Please also remember that all staff and faculty will receive considerable advance notice of the resumption of on-campus work. A key planning method that we are utilizing for our return to campus involves conducting zone flow analysis across the university. This practice uses public health guidelines to evaluate and adjust traffic flows in areas like hallways and stairwells, common areas, workspaces to mitigate the possible spread of the virus. This has already been completed for a number of our critical research facilities on campus. It will also be conducted for all spaces prior to the return of students, faculty, and staff to our campus. Beyond zone and flow analysis, we're also working on a number of other strategies to address our return to on-campus activities, including eating and desanitizing activities, how we're going to utilize personal protective equipment, how we can best maintain effective social distancing, and the appropriate screening protocols for everyone as they return to campus. So we have made a great deal of progress over the past three months, but we still have plenty of work ahead of us. And we're looking forward to seeing the days in the near future when we can all be back on campus. So thank you, and now back to Joanne to begin to answer some of the COVID-related questions that have been put in front of us. So thank you.
We will be turning the Q and A function toward the live audience on now, and I will be posing a variety of questions to our panel submitted before the event, as well as live questions from the audience. We were happy to see an overwhelming response with hundreds of questions, many of them falling into themes which our panel will address today. For the purposes of this event and due to time constraints, we ask that questions posted through the live Q and A feature are related to COVID response and return to campus phases. You can find many of the answers related to fall term 2020, the latest updates, staff, faculty, and student resources, and more on U-Windsor.ca/coronavirus. So one of the first questions that came in, pre-submitted, is, can you tell us about the financial impact and any potential implications these might have on staffing? Dr. Gordon?
Okay, well, thank you, Joanne, and that's a great question. And certainly, we're hearing a lot about the financial considerations of universities moving forward. In response to COVID-19, we actually readjusted our budget planning process for 2021 to actually provide us with a better framework to deal with some of the anticipated impacts associated with the pandemic. We're currently forecasting a slightly greater than $20 million budget shortfall, and that's primarily because of the challenges of international recruitment, but also certainly a number of other issues that we're dealing with in terms of the pandemic response. However, certainly, we're developing a large number of planning tools to really help support a balanced budget for 2021 and working really closely with our Board of Governors in terms of responding to that. I'll pass it over to Rita, however, to talk about some of the staffing implications associated with our budgetary challenges.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. So as Dr. Gordon said, we are working with our budget managers really to review our human resources needs, and it's really difficult to say at this time what the long-term impact will be. We've also been having some discussions with our bargaining agents, certainly to look at some tools available to us so that our employees can continue to do meaningful work remotely during the period of pay continuity. Thank you.
The next question is a health and safety question. How will social distancing be addressed in areas where there are a lot of student interaction? For example, cashiers, registrars, awards, and et cetera. Dr. Gordon?
Well, thank you, Joanne, and certainly, as I've already mentioned, our various working groups are focusing on just those issues in terms of supporting the health and safety of our entire community. And certainly, we're spending quite a bit of time looking at a wide range of issues beyond screening and certainly beyond social distancing, but also including personal protective equipment and also a number of other key criteria that are going to really help support the safe return to campus. I'll, however, pass this over to Rita and Sheri Lynn Minard to provide further context to these issues.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. As was previously indicated, there are 10 working groups that have been struck to really look at how we return to campus safely, and that's always our top priority. We're also engaging with health authorities to ensure that our plans are appropriate, and of course, that would include the Windsor Essex County Health Unit. In areas with high traffic and face-to-face interactions, we're looking at appropriate barriers, certainly social distancing protocols, and reminders to wash hands often and well. And where social distancing can't be adhered to, we'll look to the use of face masks. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. This question is very similar, and it also came in pre-event. How will social distancing be addressed in offices where there is insufficient space to keep six feet away from coworkers? Dr. Gordon?
Well, thanks again, Joanne, and I'll pass this over to Rita and Sheri Lynn Minard, who's the Chair of our pandemic planning committee to respond.
Yes, thank you. Clearly, there are a lot of concerns with social distancing and maintaining social distancing while at work and elsewhere, and really in those areas where social distancing may not be possible, we would be looking to how the space could possibly be reconfigured better and also looking at the same protocols that, you know, I discussed earlier in terms of those protocols that the health authorities talk about, which are really making sure that where we can't keep social distance, that we would use face masks, wash our hands. The working groups are really looking at a variety of things, and those things include space. And so I really want to highlight that the return to campus plans will really require approval on our part, which would also ensure that we have all health and safety matters considered. As Dr. Gordon indicated, Sheri Lynn Minard is the Chair of the Pandemic Planning Committee. A lot of discussions are being had there, and so Sheri, if you'd like to add to that, please do. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Yeah, the Pandemic Planning Committee definitely discusses these things, and they're considered. As the working groups start to bring forward plans for return to work, we'll be looking at those and highlighting exactly what issues need to be addressed in some of these situations where social distancing can't be maintained. Again, as Rita mentioned, hand washing and PPE are some of the things that we can consider, as well as engineering controls and also just the way we planned through the processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Our next question is again about health and safety. Upon return to work on campus, will personal protection equipment be supplied by the University of Windsor? Dr. Gordon?
Yes, thanks, Joanne, and again, this is another issue that we're spending a lot of time looking at and developing processes for procuring sufficient PPEs as well. So it might just be best just to move this over to Rita and Sheri again.
Sheri has been working with our procurement area to procure personal protective equipment, and so I will ask her to expand on that a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. We've been working with procurement on procuring face masks for our campus and staff for a safe return to work. So these are in situations where the social distancing can't be maintained, the six feet of social distancing, as recommended by public health. So we're following their recommendation that in areas or in situations where social distancing cannot be maintained, that face masks be worn, and we're working with procurement on providing those for our staff and faculty as we return to work. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheri. Another question about PPE. How do you enforce a sensible PPE policy that everyone will comply with, and how will it be applied to external contractors working on campus? Dr. Gordon?
Yes, and so, Joanne, again, as we've mentioned, we're going to be establishing screening and protocols for our return to work and certainly doing a lot of active monitoring, making sure that those protocols are being maintained. We have a number of existing capital projects that are happening here on campus, and I'll pass it over to our VP, Operations and Finance, Anna Kirby, to highlight how that's being coordinated with external contractors and when they're on campus.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. We currently, as Dr. Gordon mentioned, have several construction projects occurring as we speak. Each contractor is required to have their own COVID protocols in place. These are reviewed before any work begins on campus to ensure that they meet our standards. We also audit each of these sites on a rotating basis to ensure these protocols are being followed as they work. These audits have been helpful for both the university and the contractors.
Thank you, Anna. Next question is a teaching and learning question. Why was an online model chosen and not a hybrid? Dr. Gordon?
Yes, certainly, we spent a lot of time in consultation with deans across the university, as well as other institutions in terms of their planning, and, you know, explored the best model that was appropriate for the University of Windsor. I will highlight that the vast majority of universities here in Ontario, but also across the country, are moving to a similar model where primarily online will be the mode of delivery with a few exceptions. But I'll have the Provost Douglas Neal to further elaborate on that.
Thank you. Yes, that's right. Most universities have adopted the position of saying that the majority of their courses will be online, most of their courses. So our message was that we will be primarily online in the fall. What that means is, our default position is that all our courses will be delivered through alternative methods, remote, virtual, online. However, in rare circumstances, there will be some exceptions, and those exceptions have been part of a discussion between the frontline instructors and the deans and the provost's office. In cases where it is necessary for accreditation purposes, I'm also thinking of clinical experiences of students, some labs as well, where it's important for the instruction to be delivered face-to-face. But in those cases, we will be, as the president has said, be complying with provincial requirements and health and safety guidelines, physical distancing, all those things, the zone and flow plan as well. So we will be primarily online with a few exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. We're going to take a live question from our viewing audience. The first question we have is, I know you can't give a definitive answer to when we might be returning to campus, but is it reasonable to assume it won't be before September? Dr. Gordon?
Yeah, and that's probably one of the most frequently asked questions that we've given. And as we've said, you know, we do have some of our essential staff that have been on campus every day. And then as we start to relax more in terms of research opportunities, we're going to be seeing more and more of our students, staff, and faculty be on campus and be involved in those critical research activities over the summer months. Certainly, the entire process that we've established in terms of a phased-in approach to be consistent with provincial and federal guidelines is to really be able to do things in a safe and coordinated way. So our hope is that there will be an opportunity for more and more progress to be made through the blended phase of having people on campus. We're going to be, as we said already, focusing a lot of our attention in terms of looking at zone and flow considerations in each and every building to allow for the safe return. But it's something that we're spending every day focused on in terms of making sure that we're providing a safe environment for when we are in a position to open up the campus to our entire community.
Our next question is about tuition and financial. Will tuition fees be lowered as we will not have access to several services on campus, at least for the fall semester? Dr. Gordon?
A question that we've been asked a lot as we ended the winter semester and certainly as we've been working through intercession, summer session, but also as we head into the fall. I think we have to recognize that tuition is one issue, but certainly, you know, fees paid by our students for ancillary services is another key consideration as well. So I'll pass it over to the Provost, Douglas Neal, and Anna Kirby to reflect both of those considerations.
Thank you. Yes, I think the question is really asking about both tuition fees and ancillary fees. So let me deal with the tuition fees. No, we will not be lowering tuition fees for the fall semester, and our thinking behind that is that we are continuing to deliver our programs at the University of Windsor. We're open for business in the fall semester. So if students are taking their courses, they're taking their programs, they're completing their degrees, then the tuition fees associated with those educational credentials will still apply. Over to Anna.
Thank you. The ancillary fees are used to support important services and resources for our students. With the move to online, the various areas have worked very hard to ensure that the services supported by these fees are available to students online. Having said that, in the coming month or so, a committee has been pulled together to review all these fees and to ensure that they are still relevant and fair.
Thank you, Anna. Our next question is, how will first-year residents' deposits and fees be affected? Dr. Gordon?
And Joanne, another frequently asked question as well. So perhaps probably the best person to answer that is Ryan Flanagan. I'll pass it over to Ryan.
So yes, we're going to be more flexible with our deposits this year. So for our first-year students who are applying for residence, and residence is open to answer that question, they will have seven days after the room confirmation, the receipt of their email that says they've confirmed their room, they will have seven days to be able to get a full refund, and that will be in place until July 24th. If a student still wants to get out of their residence contract, they can do that up until July 24th after the seven days. And but until July 24th, they will lose their deposit. So seven days after your room assignment, you have the opportunity to get a full refund, and until January 24th, you have the opportunity to get out of your room assignment with the loss of your deposit. For upper-year students, if you've already received your room assignment, you have until July 15th to get a full refund. If you apply to residence after July 15th, you will have seven days after the confirmation of your room assignment to get a full refund. After that date, you will be committed to your contract, and it is our expectation that you will be here in the fall. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. We have another question that was pre-submitted, and it also was posted online, so this will address both. Don't you think the decision of closing until December 2020 is a bit too much and early? And an early one. Mental health is a very big concern. Please reconsider. This question was also posted online by Devinder about mental health and how we're going about the phased approach and then return to campus research and classes. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, again, Joanne, this is a decision that we didn't take very lightly, and we did, again, as we've said, you know, explore the risks, but also to really frame an approach that made the best sense and also provide an opportunity for us to effectively transition to an online delivery format primarily for the fall. I'll, however, pass it over to the Provost that's been leading a lot of the discussions on these issues, and certainly, Douglas is well aware of some of the issues around mental health and the importance of us continuing on moving forward in terms of, you know, transitioning to on-campus activities, but also some of the risks associated with that, too.
Thank you. Well, we believe that this is the prudent thing to do. We did have many discussions internally, but we also compared notes with other institutions, provincially and nationally, and overwhelmingly, most institutions are taking this approach for the fall semester. Maybe with luck, we will be able to return to a face-to-face form of delivery in January of '21, but for now, this is what we think is a prudent course of action. We wanted to make the announcement, well, we made it in May, so as to give clarity to students and families and also to instructors as to what our direction was going to be for fall 2020. I might just give you a quick analogy. There's a math professor in California who wrote a very compelling article against reopening face-to-face in the fall. And one analogy that he uses is that, and I'll apply it to the University of Windsor, if we count everybody, all in, 16,000 students plus staff plus faculty, we are on any given day a community. day a community of about 20,000 people. There is no way that you can socially distance either safely or practically 20,000 people. So we think this is the right direction to go. We also think that it removes some of the stress and anxiety of worrying about going into a situation where you might get sick by being close to other people who might have COVID-19. We have a lot of supports on campus for mental health and our AVP student experience. Ryan Flanagan can certainly speak knowledgeably about those. We recently introduced our first student mental health initiative here at the University of Windsor. So I would want to direct the callers, the questioners, to the supports that we currently have in place. We believe that it's very important, and we want to support our students. Thank you.
We have a research question. What is required to transition from Phase II to Phase III research activity?
Yes, Joanne, and as we mentioned, too, we've taken an approach in terms of research resumption similar to all other universities here in the province of Ontario, and certainly sharing best practices and safety considerations around the resumption of critical research to date. But I'll pass it over to our Vice President, Research Innovation, Michael Su, to further elaborate on that question in terms of transitioning from Phase II to Phase III.
Thank you, Rob. At this point in time, no decisions have been made about transition between Phase II and Phase III. My own personal opinion is that it would be unwise for us to move beyond Phase II before the province declares that we are at Stage II in reopening of the province. And even then, we have to ensure that the university is ready health and safety-wise for Phase III. Now, this strategy is in complete accordance with the province's announcement made earlier today, and that announcement is entitled, "Ontario unveils a plan to reopen post-secondary education," which describes a phased approach that prioritizes health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We have a question about employee support. Many staff are working harder through COVID-19, along with added stress of homeschooling, children, et cetera. What are we doing to help working families? Dr. Gordon.
Yes, Joanne, it's another thing that we've been certainly focusing on quite a bit and recognizing the fairly impromptu decision to have people working remotely during the past three months. And we really appreciate the challenges that have come with that as well. And certainly, we're going to continue to do our best to help support all of our staff and faculty during this difficult time. I'll pass it over, however, to Rita to further elaborate.
Thank you for the question. This is a really stressful time, and we recognize that it can be hard for individuals and families, particularly really in light of all of the competing demands. And I know that we're all trying to do our very best in meeting the demands placed on us. So what we've done is we have offered a number of wellness webinars through the Canadian Mental Health Association. These are still available on our website at ewindsor.ca/hr on the right-hand side under Communications and Resources. We've published a number of information bulletins as well in dealing with COVID-19 for when you're working remotely as well. We've distributed a number of wellness e-digests. I always do, though, encourage people who might be struggling or people who might have a family member that is struggling to really look at our Employee Assistance Program resource through Morno Chappell. That information, again, is available on our website, and we really do encourage people to tap into that as well. I really invite anyone who's got any suggestions or comments with respect to what maybe we could be doing better to please bring those forward, and we will do our very best to help you through this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. We're going to take a live question. Thanks for your leadership thus far, Dr. Gordon. I know departments have been diligent thus far, working to meet potential realignment targets. Has the government indicated any available funding to universities to meet the budget shortfalls?
Yeah, and Joanne, that's a question certainly we've been asked a lot and have been working really closely with all post-secondary institutions in Ontario to really better position than need that exists in both universities and colleges. There was an opportunity with some one-time money from the province to all post-secondary institutions at the end of the budget year in April that was used primarily to support our response to the pandemic. It wasn't a significant amount of money, but certainly it did help us with respect to developing some plans with respect to dealing with the pandemic over the past three months. We've been working really closely, as I've said, to really position down-the-road support for universities in particular, but also colleges, given the uncertainty of things moving forward. And so there's been a lot of dialogue, a lot of consultation with the government. And we're hoping for some positive support down the road, but also making sure, too, that we're being fiscally prudent in terms of our budgetary considerations, as we talked about, to make sure that we do our best to really be able to have a balanced budget for the coming year.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. We have another question about teaching and learning. If classes end up being on campus for the winter 2021 term, will online classes be an option for students who still don't feel safe for them to return on campus?
And yes, that's certainly another issue that we're being asked about a lot. Our hope right now here in early June is that it will be closer to getting back to normal by January 2021. But again, I think we have to recognize that there's a new normal. And so moving forward, we're going to be reflecting those types of realities in terms of our planning. I'll, however, pass it over to the Provost to further elaborate on this, because I know that this has been certainly a current topic for us as we start to move forward beyond thinking about the fall and into the winter of 2021.
Thank you. It's a question that I have discussed in a preliminary way with the deans. I mean, January 21 seems a long ways off right now, and it is our hope that we would be able to get back face-to-face. We haven't landed on a final decision here, but I think it's safe to say that if we got the all-clear signal and we were able to return to a face-to-face existence, then the winter term would probably be the inverse of the fall term. By that, I mean, in the fall, we are primarily online with rare exceptions of face-to-face. And if we got the all-clear, it would be the mirror image of that. We would be primarily face-to-face in January with rare exceptions being online. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. We have another pre-submitted question. What will happen with parking? If we return for winter 2021, will you be offering a four-month pass? Dr. Gordon.
Yes, well, we talk a lot about parking here at the University of Windsor, and certainly I think everybody's aware that we did provide some rebates and supports for our community during the pandemic. Specifically to this question, I'll pass it over to Anna Kirby to elaborate on.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. So when students do return to campus, permits will be available for that period, whatever that may be. So if it's in the winter semester, then there will definitely be a four-month permit available. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Our next question again is about teaching and learning. What online teaching platform, example Zoom, Blackboard Collaborate, or TEAMS, is the university suggesting for online classes in fall 2020? Are there plans to prepare a wide range of faculty members on how to use this platform well and effectively without too many time-consuming workshops? Dr. Gordon.
Joanne, I've been thrilled with the leadership that we have with our open learning folks here at the University of Windsor. They did an incredible job of transitioning in three days, working with our faculty and staff across the university in March to deal with the end of the winter semester. But certainly, there's been a strong coordinated effort across the university in terms of preparing things for what we expect will be an exceptional opportunity and learning experience for all of our students for the fall semester. I'll, however, pass it over to Nick to elaborate on some of the details. But I want to do highlight again that we have made significant institutional investments to really help support the systems that Nick's going to be talking about, too.
Thanks, Dr. Gordon. You're right in that we were really lucky in that we'd already made a number of institutional decisions and investments prior to this happening. And we've been one of the largest Blackboard Collaborate users in North America for the last several years now. And so we had Collaborate in place already as our institutional virtual classroom, and we've recently added MS Teams as another institutionally-supported web conferencing tool. So both of those tools together offer the opportunity to create engaging and interactive live classroom and collaborative spaces in our online courses. But we've also been working to create a wide range of online self-help resources for faculty and for students to help to get them up to speed using these tools, as well as rolling out things like workshops, departmental supports, and even we have a tutorial built right into every Blackboard course site now to help people learn how to use these tools. And we'll continue to offer those as we move into the fall and try and get everyone up to speed and ready to use the tools that are available to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Another question about teaching and admission. Can you explain the format of the class before students register so that the students will be prepared and ready to learn in this new online format? Dr. Gordon.
Yes, and Joanne, we've certainly been spending quite a bit of time looking at that. And as we've been mentioning as well, making sure, too, that there's significant amount of engagement of our instructors, faculty, and staff across the institution. However, certainly, I know that a lot of students are asking about what their experience is going to look like for the fall. So I'll pass that over to both the Provost, Douglas Neal, as well as Chris Bush to elaborate on.
Thank you. So the short answer to the question is yes. When students register, they will see on the registration portal whether their courses are online or whether there's a face-to-face component. So at the time that students go in to choose their courses, they will know what delivery mode their course will be in. If students have questions beyond that, I would encourage them to speak to the department or the program to get more detail about specific courses. But I'll turn it over to our AVP enrollment management, Chris Bush.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Or sorry, Dr. Neal. In addition, we have stood up a new website to help explain to incoming students about what online learning may look like. We would encourage students to visit our future student website, along with ask.uinsor, to find information in regards to common questions and answers. Thank you, and to you, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you. We're going to take a live question. And Dr. Neal had touched upon this a little bit. When will there be a decision made about winter? Students need to know if they need to renew their leases. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, and certainly, I'll pass it over to the Provost to further elaborate on this, but it's something that we are looking at, making sure that we consider that balance of health and safety, as well as the other key considerations. Ultimately, certainly, the winter semester may depend a lot on the presence of a vaccine, but certainly, we're going to continue to make sure that we place a significant commitment around safety of our community, our staff, students, and faculty in making that final decision. Certainly, we did get some criticism for making the announcement about the fall semester three and a half months before the beginning. Certainly, we will do our best to try to make a decision on winter in a timely fashion, but again, with the foundation around health and safety.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. I'll just add that I think the criteria that we'll base our decision on will be the same criteria that we used for fall. And as the president has just said, it will be the health and safety of our community first and foremost. January 21 is a long ways out. The COVID-19 situation continues to evolve very quickly, almost daily. So it's impossible to say right now or even to specify a date by which we could say this is what we'll be doing for January 21. But as the president just said, we'll try to do it in a timely way, try to give people sufficient lead time to make decisions about not just their academic life, but their personal life. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. We have a pre-submitted question about international students. Is it anticipated or known that there will be a substantial drop in international student enrollment in fall 2020? Dr. Gordon.
Certainly, we're proud of the significant international enrollment here at the University of Windsor. About 25% of our student population comes internationally. About 75% of those international students come from India and China. And certainly, we've been spending quite a bit of time coordinating issues with each and every individual student that had planned on enrolling here at the University of Windsor. Certainly, Chris Bush is providing an incredible amount of leadership in terms of supporting that effort, so I'll pass it over to him to answer this question.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. As you mentioned, international students have additional challenges associated with attending class in the fall, such as inability to secure a study permit, travel restrictions, requirements to self-quarantine if traveling to Canada, or even accessing technology or reliable internet if studying from their home country or even abroad. We have over 1,400 international graduate and 300 undergraduate students who have already confirmed their decision to start studying with us this fall. Our teams have been keeping in touch with them to better understand their intentions, including conducting periodic pulse checks, hosting institutional and faculty-specific webinars, inviting them to virtual events, and engaging with them in a more traditional manner, the old-fashioned phone call. Conversion will be especially important this time around, but the initial responses appear very positive. Despite these efforts, admitted international students, we still continue to remain flexible, empathetic, and accommodating to their needs. Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Chris. We have a question about return to campus. Is a department head and manager to come up with a plan for the department to return to work? What kind of resources can be expected from the university to help with this? For example, supplies, retrofitting offices, police, et cetera. Dr. Gordon.
Well, Joanne, as we've talked about, we've developed, I think, a fairly comprehensive structure regarding the safe return to on-campus activities. We've mentioned previously about the 10 working groups, the incredible job that our pandemic planning committee has been playing in terms of identifying risks and solutions to those risks, as well as a number of other safety protocols like zone and flow, as we've talked about, the potential kind of development of procurement considerations regarding PPE, as well as a number of other screening tools as well. So certainly, first and foremost, there's a significant institutional commitment around providing support for all of our units across the university. However, I'll pass it over to Rita to talk a little bit about certainly some of the expectations for individual units on campus.
Okay, thank you so much. We really do look to our department heads and managers to develop preliminary plans, since really they are the ones that know their areas best and are the experts in those areas. However, those plans will be supported through the working groups, and we have working groups that look at space, health, and safety, a variety of measures and considerations so that the return to work, return to campus, is safe. And with the final approval, as discussed earlier, going through the appropriate vice president in order to ensure that we've got everything covered and that there is a consistent approach to the return to campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. We have another pre-submitted question. Residence availability and considerations in light of COVID-19. Example, single rooms, shared bathrooms, cleaning, availability of rooms. Dr. Gordon.
Yes, certainly, we spent quite a bit of time over the past few months as we first dealt with the pandemic to look at our students as they transition from residence. And certainly, we're doing the same type of thoughtful oversight of the potential for students to be on campus this fall. I'll, however, pass it over to Ryan Flanagan to further kind of frame what our planning considerations are regarding the fall.
We'll just move on. I think Dr. Gordon had covered some of that, and we'll go back to him if we have a chance. Our next question is, will all food services be open next year? What will ordering, picking up food... What will ordering, picking up food look like in fall 2020? Dr. Gordon?
Yes, and food services as well continues to be an issue that we're spending a lot of time thinking about as we look into the fall semester. I'll, however, pass it over to Hannah Kirby to elaborate on some of the services that we expect to be available.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. So there will be some food services locations open this fall. The number and which ones will be based on the number of students living in residence and the number of students and staff and faculty that may be on campus during that time. Food services working on a reopening plan, which does include measures to ensure that physical distancing is practiced in each of the food locations. Seating areas will most likely be closed and all food will be on a takeout service basis. The plan, though, is flexible and we will be adding more services and lifting restrictions as we move forward based on the government guidelines for public gatherings. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. We're going to take a question from online. The question is, if people on campus choose to ignore social distancing requirements, how will these situations be addressed? This applies to staff, faculty, and students, et cetera. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, and certainly that's an important consideration as well regarding our screening for on-campus return. And certainly, I think, helped us make the decision for primarily being online this fall. So individuals that will be required to be on campus will actually have to have a clearly articulated screening protocol that they'll have to adhere to as they come back to campus. And as we've said, that will be monitored to really help to make sure that social distancing, as well as the other safety considerations that we built into our planning, are being adhered to.
We have another question about teaching and learning. Online learning, how will students who require lab credits and hours complete these requirements? Dr. Gordon?
Yes, so these are the details that we're spending a lot of time on, certainly to make sure that we have appropriate answers. I'll pass it over to the provost to elaborate on how we're dealing with those considerations.
Thank you. Yes, I know instructors and deans have been looking at all aspects of this very important question. I think there are three ways that students will be able to complete their lab components. The first being virtually. So I know that a number of lab components are being converted into virtual labs where instead of doing the lab face-to-face, sleeves rolled up kind of thing, you will be doing it remotely and virtually. The second way is that in some cases, courses are either being flipped around so that instead of doing your hands-on lab work in the fall term, maybe that can be deferred to the winter term and other aspects of a course could be dealt with in fall. If that's the case, then students would still get an in-progress credit for completing the part of the course they do in the fall and then they would complete the lab component later on. And the third way is, as I mentioned before, in rare instances, there will be some face-to-face labs, but they will be following all the necessary protocols, the zone and flow plans that have been discussed. And those exceptions have been approved by the office of the provost through consultation with the deans. So those are the ways that students will still be able to get their labs. Thanks.
Thank you, Douglas. As graduate students, we are struggling without the library and the access to books and interlibrary loans. Will pickup-only solutions be implemented? Dr. Gordon?
Yes, and this is another issue that we're attempting to resolve. I know there's been a lot of work done by the library and their staff to really help position us for being able to support graduate students, faculty, and staff needs as quickly as possible. I'll, however, pass it over to the provost to talk a little bit more about that because he's certainly been key in terms of the leadership planner and helping to support just that.
Yeah, well, thank you. I've had discussions with Pascal Colarko, the university librarian, and he and his team have put together a preliminary plan for a phased return to library activities. It is too early to say right now to put any date on when curbside pickup would begin or interlibrary loan. Interlibrary, of course, is just a little more complicated because it involves collaboration and coordination with other libraries across the province. It's my understanding that in the GTA, there isn't going to be any interlibrary loan anytime soon. So we will be working toward the resumption of activities in the Letty Library on campus, but it's too early to say exactly when. Thanks.
Thank you, Douglas. This question was touched upon a little bit earlier. Do you have a plan for students who will undoubtedly face mental health stress while trying to navigate online learning? Have you hired extra mental health professionals or given your staff training to help deal with students who may face this issue? Dr. Gordon?
Another important consideration that we're looking at to try and provide as much support as we possibly can. I see that Ryan Flanagan is back online, so we'll ask Ryan to respond to that. But I'll also maybe indicate that when Ryan was off earlier, the question about the availability considerations of residence spaces as well is something that he could maybe also respond to.
Sure, thanks for the opportunity and sorry for dropping off. There was a power outage in my neck of the woods here. So I'll answer the first question, which is on mental health support. So the University of Windsor continues to have the full suite of supports in counseling and in our health services team. So we're seeing students virtually right now and our health services is seeing students in person as necessary. And this will continue to be the case as we go into the fall. In addition to these services, our wellness outreach offices looking to develop a robust prevention and awareness program that relates to things such as social distancing and isolation, the things that students will experience when they come back to their classes or the things that they've been experiencing over the summer. We understand that it's been a difficult period for everyone, including our students. And so we want to make sure that we're being proactive and giving our students the opportunity to reach out to our professional staff here on campus, but also amongst themselves. And so we've got a lot of social programming that has been designed for the fall as well, where students can connect virtually and build connections and community so they can support one another. So that is all on tap. With respect to residence, we are working very closely with the pandemic planning committee and Windsor Essex, the Windsor Essex Health Unit. But we are implementing a number of plans in residence to make sure our students are safe. That is our number-one priority, of course. And what that will mean is we will not have students doubling up in rooms. We'll have single rooms and we'll have limited use of bathrooms. We'll have increased cleaning regimes in residence in our buildings. And we'll also be providing our students with additional cleaning supplies. And so in addition to that, we'll have robust, again, communications as it relates to social distancing. And like everybody has mentioned, we'll have zone and flow analyses that will guide students in terms of their movement in our buildings. So lots will be done to ensure that our students that visit and that stay with us this fall are aware of the requirements of living in residence and we'll be supporting them as they're in our community over the entirety of the term and into the winter as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. I just want everyone to be made aware that it is four o'clock, but we'll take a few more questions before we wrap it up. This next question is, what is the university doing to secure exam testing online? Dr. Gordon?
Yes, that's a really important issue and I know a lot of students are always asking about those specific considerations as well. I'll probably best to turn it over to Nick Baker to highlight some of the key things that we're focusing on around that.
Upholding the academic integrity of our endeavors is critically important to our reputation and to the value of U Windsor credentials. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that we are solid in that area. The move to online teaching doesn't really change that. It actually provides an opportunity for us to really deeply reexamine our own pedagogies and put in place pedagogies that support and encourage academic integrity. Exams are really only one piece, one way to assess learning. And we're working with faculty to identify the most effective ways for them to evaluate specific learning outcomes in their own courses. And that means exploring a whole range of authentic methods of assessing what students have learned and what they can do. For some courses, that may mean that they still require exams. And where that's necessary, we're working to ensure that there is a reliable, scalable, easy-to-use exam creation and management tool available to faculty. So some exams may also need to use an online proctoring tool. But that's just one of the digital strategies that we're exploring to support exam integrity. And that's one of the things that has to be carefully considered before wide adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. I'm going to take one more question and then we'll wrap it up. This was an employee support question. If one can continue working from home without any negative impact to the department, would there be a possibility to have the option to do so? Dr. Gordon?
Yes, and certainly these are really important issues that many institutions are reflecting today, given some of the issues that have evolved as a result of the pandemic. And certainly, we've begun a number of discussions with individual employees, but with a number of our other groups on campus to really further elaborate on future opportunities. However, I'll pass it over to Rita to provide more context on that question.
Thank you. So our objective really is to have everyone return to campus at some point. This is our community. We've talked a bit about a phased-in approach. And so it's very likely that through this approach, those people whose managers determine that they can continue to work remotely will be the last folks to return to campus. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we've run out of time and this concludes our town hall. I'll pass it on to Dr. Gordon for his concluding remarks.
Hey, thanks so much, Joanne, and thanks to everyone who joined us today. We'll be continuing this conversation through a new website that will focus on the return to campus, where we'll provide regular updates and we'll be listening to your concerns and suggestions. Certainly, we've also put a lot of focus on making sure that we have responses to many of the frequently asked questions that our students, staff, and faculty are asking during these difficult times. And I'm sure there will be more town halls in the future. So again, thanks, everyone, and we continue to stand together Windsor Proud. Have a great day, everybody.